Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call together the February 19th, 2019 regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We welcome you all here tonight. I hope you made it here dry and safe and sound. It is brutal out there tonight. We have several recommendations to do tonight, and we ask that you stay through the duration of the meeting till the Superior Spotlight is completed. At that time, we will take a brief break and before we start the business portion of our meeting, so if you'd like to exit, that would be a good time, although you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting as well. If you would please stand for the pledge. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have one recommended change to our agenda, to postpone Item 8B, Adoption of Employee Work Calendars, to the next regular meeting in March. Other than that, is there any other changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So move.
Second. Motion by Tom, a second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous. Next, we now have recognition with Dr. Cindy Stallone.
This is always the best part of the meeting because we have such great people who work in this system, and tonight, we are honoring several of them. I'd like to start with the 2019 Ethics and Professional Coaching Award for David Smart. Denmark High School baseball coach David Smart has been chosen as the 2019 Ethics and Professional Coaching Award winner. The award is the highest honor from the Georgia dugout club, GADC, and is awarded at the annual convention held in Atlanta each January. The winner is chosen from a committee made up of college and high school coaches and comes from nominations taken statewide. Please congratulate David Smart. Those of you who are here to support David, would you please stand and let us say thank you to YouTube? Next is Terri North. She has receiving the Jerry Davis Georgia Distinguished Principal Award. It was, it is from the Georgia Middle School Association of Principals, and it was given at the Fall Gale Conference. She is principal of DeSantis Middle School. Congratulations. Those of you who are supportive, Terri, would you please stand and let us say thank you?
Congratulations.
And another excellent employee. Dr. Ben Jones has received the Hal Beaver Georgia Outstanding Assistant Principal Award. He is currently South Forsyth Middle School Assistant Principal and the 2019-20 Principal of Shallow Point Elementary. Please say congratulations to Dr. Jones. Those of you here to support Dr. Jones and congratulate him, please stand. Another Gale Award, the Gale Exemplary Service Award. Cheryl Riddle, Principal of Liberty Middle School, was awarded that as the exemplary service award recipient. Those of you here to support Cheryl, would you please stand and let us, thank you. What a great group of people we have to work with. And one more. This is the Employee of the Month. It is the Leadership Award, and it goes to Bob Conarelli this evening. Where are you, Bob? Can you stand right here while I talk about you? Jim and Nix is over here. They're our sponsor, and they have a gift for him at the end. There are five pages of comments about Bob in small type, but I'm going to hit the highlights. "Bob is one of the most passionate administrators that I have ever worked with. He cares so deeply about his staff and students. He is awesome school and spirit, and he makes coming to work so rewarding. He is a wonderful, hard-working, devoted, and kind administrator who has done an endless laundry list of things to get DHS off the ground. Bob is a selfless and driven educator who wants the best for every student. Our school would not be the same without Bob Conarelli. He is an integral piece to our Dane family. Bob works tirelessly and often in the background. Not everyone is aware of all that he does. Plain and simple, he is the best there is. He supports everyone, including students, teachers, and administration. Beyond being involved, all he does is done with great joy. His positive disposition and love for what he does becomes infectious to those he comes in contact with." And last, but not least, sums it up. Just because he's so awesome. Congratulations. Those of you here to support Bob, please stand and let us thank you. It's now time for the Superior Spotlight. I'm going to turn this over to Casey Martin, Assistant Principal at Forsyth Central High School. It is about the Forsyth Central Wellness Initiative. Casey?
My name is Casey Martin, and I'm an Assistant Principal at Forsyth Central High School. Two years ago, we added the word "healthy" to our mission statement. At Forsyth Central High School, we lead our students to become healthy and productive American citizens who can solve problems, communicate effectively, and serve selflessly. With that as our mission, we continue to work on our instructional mission, the productive element of that statement. But we realized that we needed to be much more intentional in our efforts to help students and staff become more healthy, both socially and emotionally. Dr. Bearden has continually challenged us to make our larger schools feel smaller, to get more personalized in our approach. At Forsyth Central, from 2013 to the present, we have grown from 1,700 to almost 2,500 students. With this reality and Dr. Bearden's charge in mind, we started this process by finding out just where our students were in terms of their social and emotional health. Through surveys that we developed, as well as from data collected from the Science of Suicide program, our advanced ed feedback, we determined that too many of our kids were in fact in crisis and could potentially slip through the cracks. The numbers of emergency conferences conducted in the 2017-2018 school year were higher than we had ever seen. An ever-growing school, a student body who are seemingly slaves to their devices, social pressures from a variety of sources, and these were just a few of the challenges our kids faced. Our wellness initiative really zeroes in on three areas. Building an even more positive school environment where all of our kids feel welcome, where we take the time to celebrate student and staff successes, and where our discipline helps students to make changes in their behavior. Embedding time to unplug so the relationships can be built, and establishing a place where students can work with experts to develop coping strategies. In each of these areas that we are sharing with you, I want to state right up front that the support from our county, from our students and parents, and from our variety of business partners has been the key to many of the successes that we've experienced. I'll give you a quick overview for each of these, but we have a video that we'll share that gives them a little more detail. The first stage of this came with the team led by Dr. Josh Love. It was the State's Positive Behavior Intervention Support, or PBIS, program. We rolled this together with many other climate-building activities that we do, and we refer to as our Bulldog Best Initiative. While that was being implemented, we studied North Cornet High School and our sister school, Lambert, to see how they had transformed their lunch periods to provide student support time. A school improvement team that I have the honor to lead developed what is known as the Forsyth Central Power Hour. Finally, the efforts of our former graduation coach, Bethany Blumenstein, along with Ms. Karen Cole, led to the establishment of the Central Wellness Center. With the startup funding coming from, in part, the FCHS Alumni Association, the Wellness Center started taking place. Ms. Cole stepped up to take on the newly created role of Wellness Coach. Under her direction, we now have within one section of our school, an area where students can meet with professional therapists, our student advocacy specialists, our social worker, as well as our graduation and wellness coaches. From unplugging, to praying, to stretching, to napping, this has become a place for our kids and staff to unwind. Let's watch this video that explains all of this a little more clearly, and as a conclusion, we will be available for your questions and to provide some early data that we've collected.
At Forsyth Central, our mission is to lead students to become healthy, productive, American citizens who will be able to solve problems, communicate effectively, and serve selflessly. Everything we do as a staff and student body revolves around this mission. As a school, we've adopted an initiative we believe will help our students achieve that mission. It's called the Forsyth Central Wellness Initiative, and it's broken down into three pillars. The first pillar is Bulldog Best. Bulldog Best is our school's way of implementing a statewide program called PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. Bulldog Best is a proactive approach to behavior, which is driven by a group of our very own Forsyth Central students called ambassadors, who implement and model positive behaviors for the rest of the student body. Students at Forsyth Central receive a Bulldog Best ticket from teachers when they are seen exhibiting positive behaviors in one of the following categories: family, communication, honesty, or service. Bulldog Best tickets are entered into a weekly drawing where winning students and their nominating teachers are recognized in class by our leadership team. They also receive various prizes ranging from candy and discounts at the school store to Zaxby's food voucher and free movie or bowling tickets. Our second pillar is Power Hour. Power Hour is an hour-long lunch on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Fridays, where students are able to get out of the cafeteria, put their phones away, and engage in conversations, relationship building, and outdoor games and activities around the school. Students are also able to use this hour to relax, study, do homework, or receive tutoring in any of the four main subjects. The third pillar is the Forsyth Central Wellness Center. At the Wellness Center, our students and staff have various opportunities to unplug and improve their mental, social, and emotional health. Two ways that they can do that are to attend relaxation sessions or hang out in the well. The well is an area where staff and students can unplug and relax without any distractions. Relaxation sessions are facilitated by our own wellness coach and open to individuals as well as full classes. Between students and staff, our Wellness Center has hosted over 3,000 people, including Calvin. Here's what the Wellness Center means to him.
The Wellness Center at Central is something unlike I've experienced before. It just takes, it takes a lot of the stress out of the day, because a lot of people know that school can be super stressful, and that can be a big obstacle in classes. And what the Wellness Center does is it takes that stress and just gets rid of it. I am so thankful that Forsyth Central brought this to our school. I'm glad that they're doing the Power Hour lunches. I'm glad they have this available throughout the entire day. It just brings perspective to everything.
Our goal is that through the Forsyth Central Wellness Initiative, we will have more stories like Calvin's that translate into our Forsyth Central students becoming healthy, productive
Have come through the Wellness Center.
Do the teachers want to do it, too?
When the teachers bring their students, they participate, and then I have teachers that come during Power Hour for the relaxation practices. I teach two relaxation practices each hour during Power Hour, so that's four sessions each day. So everybody, it's open to everybody.
That's great.
Good evening. We're excited with PBIS, or we call it Bulldog Best. As Mr. Martin mentioned, we started that last year, and this has been our second year with it, so we're still reflecting on Year One's baseline data to show growth. And just through February, we're down approximately 30% on referrals from previous years in terms of kids that have served in-school suspension. Our other data is still trending, but we do know as far as things such as tardies, those are still our leading discipline issue. I think that's probably a lot of folks' issue, but we have seen a trend where we seem to have less improvement in terms of tardies and skippings than we had in previous years from reflecting at the data. We're anxious to complete this school year and actually compare it year-long, back-to-back years, but we're excited with the progress in getting this started and anxious to see where we go with it, Year Three next year.
So if your numbers are down, and with an increased enrollment, that's probably even a higher increase that it's...
Yeah, enrollment is, I don't have the exact number. We're still in the same ballpark on that, but certainly the numbers are down. When you're looking around 30% improvement, that's pretty substantial.
How many years have you had PBIS at Central?
We began to work on it, actually, three years ago. In terms of rolling it out, we rolled it out last school year, and then this is the second year. And we've been excited. Our team got to present at the state conference this year, and a lot of people there put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it in terms of the team and the folks, Emily Riser, Bethany Blumenstein. Those folks really went above and beyond to help us get it off the ground, and it has been good for our kids and good for our, I feel like, our numbers, our data, the, I guess, the excitement when you go in the rooms and the kids light up and they know why you're there. And, you know, at first, they were kind of looking at you like you're out of left field, but now they know why you're coming, they look forward to seeing you on Fridays, and it's just become part of the culture and what we do to help reinforce positive behavior.
And is this the first year for Power Hour at Central?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's the first year of Power. Probably the biggest stat or data that has stuck out to me is the crisis conferences that I mentioned. In 2017, 2018, the fall semester, there was 28 crisis conferences conducted by our Counseling Department. And this past fall of 2018-2019 is down to 11. So we're hoping that this has had an effect on that, and that's just probably the biggest one that's kind of stuck out to me.
Often in the meetings, we hear one of the biggest problems for students, they get access to services, and if they're after school, or they're somewhere they can't get to, or their parents get them, if they're in the school and they can do it during their school day, that's got to make it so much, much better for them.
Right, it's great. I mean, you know, you walk around during Power Hour, and, you know, the kids are outside on the practice field, they're sitting in groups, and what's amazing, and the teachers that are at duty stations out there watching, they'll be speaking with me about how this is the only time we see the kids where they don't have their phones out. And, I mean, it's not, we never said, "Hey, you don't need to have your phones out out there," but they're actually having real conversations, which is pretty rare nowadays.
That's good.
Yeah, this is one of those things that's real soft. Working in HR, I see this all the time. It's hard to find metrics and data that you can really hang your hat on, but you know it's working, so keep up the good work.
Yes, thank you for your leadership and initiative to basically change the culture and the education experience, so thank you for that awesome stuff.
You know, this came up, Debbie Smith presented last year sometime, about our social-emotional learning pathway we're on in Forsyth County schools, and we talked at that time, this is not only an initiative for our students, but an initiative for our staff as well. And this is a great example, when you share the number of staff hours in the Wellness Center, how staff members are taking advantage of that opportunity, because we know, teaching is a very stressful job, and being a student is very stressful as well, and if we can lower that stress for our teachers, that has a domino effect on our students as well.
All of you are invited to come to Power Hour.
Yes, we're timed. Do we start at appointment with you? From 12 to 2 on Monday?
No, just relax on the mat, and I'll walk you through a process.
It's a beautiful place. Mr. Young leads the sessions one day, right? Yeah. Great job, guys.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. We can take a little break now? If anybody wants to take exit, now would be a good time, or we take a few moments?
Why did I say you? I was tired of you taking a picture of me and sending it to your mother, but then I thought you were placed. What is she doing?
What is she doing? You wouldn't know what she was doing, but you'd stop. You can take a picture.
Josh, thank you. Good job, Casey.
I like the Power Hour, that sounds better.
Yeah. They all get a little spudgy.
I know, but like, that sounds a little bit more...
That would never happen. Twenty years ago, that would never happen.
The Power Hour?
Well, in here.
It's a number good of them, they don't come to power. They responded to our students in our community, and now they're less stressful.
Sure, exactly.
They try to create a more positive, less anxiety...
And a little different at each school, I like that. They have a little stress, you know?
They're connected with the community.
Right, like, the principal has to be, like, behind it to really, to go there. All right, we all ready to hear and start up again? Yeah. All right, we're going to start up again. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve everything on the agenda? So move.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, a second by Wes, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right. Public participation, do we have anybody? We do not tonight. Presentation and discussion, first thing up is the 2018 Audit Report with Mr. Chris Greiner.
Hey, good evening.
Got to get some exciting stuff.
Just been waiting, you have to follow all that.
I know, every time. I have to talk to Cindy about getting moved. I'm kidding. I'm actually going to turn the podium over to Justin Davis, when Martin Jenkins is going to give the results of our FY 2018 audit.
Tough act to follow. As Chris said, my name is Justin Davis, I'm Martin Jenkins, we're the external auditors for the BOE. I believe all of y'all have electronic copy of the auditor's discussion analysis. I'm just going to do a brief summary and go through this with you. Start on page two, give you a little bit of background on Martin Jenkins. We were founded in 1918. We've got offices located all across the Southeast. We work out of the Atlanta office. We employ approximately 260 personnel. Our government practice is our largest niche within the firm. We represent about 25% of our firms. In the past three years, we've audited approximately 300 governments within the Southeast, and of those 300 governments, approximately 50 are school systems, with an additional 30 other charter schools. Adam Bailey was the lead partner on the engagement, and I was the engagement supervisor. If you flip over a couple pages, page four, to our internal independent auditor's report, this report, basically what it says is the financial statements are the responsibility of management. The auditor's responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements. We do express an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion, which means the financial statements are free of material misstatement. You'll also notice in the auditor's report this year, a new emphasis of matter paragraph, which talks about the implementation of GASB-75, which pertains to the OPEB liability, which is new this year. It put a big liability on the statement net position that hasn't been there in the past. If you flip over to page five, I'll talk about that a little bit more on page five. If you see at the bottom, some numbers reflected in the government-wide financial statements, this isn't just the general fund or your special revenue funds, this is the BOE as a whole. As you can see, we have assets of about 1.147 billion, liabilities of about 1.146 billion, so you have net position or equity of about 1.3 million. Of that 1.3 million, you have about 466 million, that's invested in your capital assets. Another 62 million's restricted, that leaves a deficit of approximately 526 million. That's kind of where GASB-75 comes in. It put a new liability on the statement net position that hasn't been there in the past, and this liability is approximately $322 million. Just to give you an idea, it decreased beginning net position by about $315 to $320 million related to this new GASB standard. The good news is the, there was an increase in net position of approximately $21 million this year in FY 18. The next few pages, on page six and seven, they talk about the general fund. There's just charts talking about revenues and expenditures. I will note that the general fund saw an increase of approximately $5 million in fiscal year 18. Flipping through on page eight, this is sort of your guide to the financial report. Say you just, if you're just interested in the capital asset activity, or you just want to know more about the long-term debt or capital leases, you can refer to this page, and it will tell you within the financial report which note to go to to find that information, instead of trying to flip through the entire financial report and getting lost, because it's a big document. Couple pages over, on page 10, we start with our required communications. These are communications that we're required to give as the auditor. The main ones I want to touch on are page 12. This, I just want to say that we had no significant difficulties with management, we had no disagreements with management. They were a pleasure to work with, very transparent. Anything that we asked, they were happy to provide us with. This is the first year that we've worked with Chris, and the transition was very smooth. Sometimes it, when you have someone new, it can be a, you know, a tougher audit, but this was very smooth, he was very transparent, and we appreciate his help in getting the audit done in a timely manner. I'll also note we had a few audit adjustments, and those were reflected in these financial statements. None of those adjustments were material or significant, they're all below our materiality thresholds. So with that said, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies during FY 18. We did have a couple of management points, and these are things that we noted that didn't warrant a significant deficiency or didn't warrant a material weakness, but we just wanted to make management aware of it, because if it was to a larger degree, it could become a finding or material weakness. One of those was related to, one of the elementary schools had some cash that wasn't deposited timely. This was actually brought to us on the front end. Again, that kind of comes back to the transparency. It was brought to us, we reviewed bank statements, and we believe that this has been remedied going forward. The other management point was related to reporting of capital assets. Basically, computers were purchased that were not capitalized. These computers were below the capitalization threshold on an individual level, but on the aggregate level, all of them combined, they were material. Again, this was, they're all accounted for, they just weren't capitalized on the statement net position. The amount was below our, our threshold. We just wanted to make management aware, because if it were, the purchases were larger, it could become a material weakness or significant deficiency. So flipping, flipping over, GASB's continuously coming out with new pronouncements. I think when I started, they were in the, when I started five years ago, they were in the high 50s or low 60s, and now they're already up to 75. And I'm already looking forward to GASB's in the 80s. So they're staying busy. The main one I want to touch on, and I think we may have touched on this last year, Statement 87 regarding leases. I believe FASB has already implemented this, or they're in the process of implementing it. Basically, what it's going to do is get away, or get away from operating leases, and it's going to essentially classify everything as a capital lease. So you'll see that impact on the statement net position going forward. But we're still a couple of years away from that new standard. And as more, more information comes out from GASB, we'll update our clients. And Chris attends our CPE events, and, and we'll continue to stay updated on that upcoming GASB. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions or discuss anything further.
Any questions? Want to thank Mr. Greiner to your office for doing such a good job and being amiable. Pleased with the, their lack of findings.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Ready for the finance report then? It's around the roll.
Almost pulled an audit report up.
Want to hear that again?
Could you go in more detail?
This is a whole 100-page document.
How long did it take to do the whole process? Several, I mean, it's like up to five days and something?
Typically, the whole process from start to finish, and when we initially get the list, only about a month, a month and a half. But they're not here, that, some of that stuff's done offsite. And then actually, the financial statements, that takes a little bit longer too. The whole process, which is very quick. I will, having been audited by the state in the past, it's not that quick. So I will give Martin Jenkins a lot of credit for finishing it that quick. Typically, with the state, it's a six to seven month process before you get an audited report. So much quicker. Very well pleased with Martin Jenkins. I think they do a great job. You have before you the financial statements as of the end of January. First slide is our statement of cash receipts and dispersments. You can see we ended the month, over 141 million. Still in great shape there. Trending down as we expect. We started with 155. That trend will continue. Again, we received most of our property taxes at the end of the year. So our dispersments are catching up with our receipts now. The way our cash flow works on the revenue side, we receive a big chunk of about half of our revenue all at one time. So then the expenditures for the rest of the year start catching up with that. That's very typical of all school systems. Next, you have the revenue detail, year-to-date, as of January 31. See at the bottom, we're up 73.72%. Last year, we were slightly, just a little bit ahead of that, 73.98. No concern there, still in good shape. 97% of our, our taxes have been collected, which is typical this time of year. We'll continue to, to collect those toward the end. Any delinquent taxes at this point will continue to come in as well. So that number will continue to trend upward. Good shape in the rest of our revenues. Next is our expenditures. You can see down at the bottom, 58.91%. If you did, 712, 58.33%. So just a little bit above that. Some of those encumbrances, as I mentioned every time, will, are things that may eventually fall off, and that may not be, it's not an actual expenditure yet. That money hasn't been spent. It's, there's a purchase order sitting out there for transportation. For instance, we do fuel for the entire year. So some of that may actually fall off before the end of the year. So it may not be a true expense. So again, 58.91% last year, right in that same ballpark, 58.45%. Trending same there as well. Debt services cash analysis, as we mentioned, we had it. Our big payments always due February 1st, principal and interest on our bonds. I like to do it a couple of days ahead of time, just to avoid any hiccups. Bank gets a little testy if that's not there February 1st, because I have to pay the bond holders. So that's why you see it in January instead of February. So you see total expenditures, 46 and a half million. Still have 24.3 million in cash in our debt services, which leaves us in great shape for our next payment, which is not due till August 1st. And you see Sploes. Most, about half of that came from, well, the majority of it, probably 75% came from Sploes, and the rest came from the debt service mileage rate, which is how we've laid out our cash flows. We worked with Citigroup to kind of come up with a plan on how to best utilize our cash flows to make those, those debt service payments. So you can see our Sploes 5 account, two and a half million, but then that'll continue to build back up before August 1st. We're trying to maximize the money that we're bringing into Sploes 5. So what we'll start doing now is investing some of that money as it comes back in. And actually, we could go out a little bit longer term with some of that now, which will give us a little bit better interest rate as well.
That was a big bond payment.
Yes.
That's huge.
We did actually pay off a bond issue with that. I'm trying to remember what year that was. It was the oldest one we had outstanding.
Oh, that's right, 2000, yes.
Yes. So we got you one down.
That's right, we were due to pay off one.
Yep. So that one's gone. So we started 14, 16, and 18 that are outstanding.
So we've gone from four to three. That's awesome.
Yep. That is very promising. I'm glad you pointed that out. And then, next slide is our investment summary. Again, general fund, between the, we have some in US Treasuries, we have some in the government investment pool. We're about 90 million. So 140 million we have right now, about 90 million of that's invested. Earning, on average, probably about 2, 2.4, 2.5%. US Treasury's a little bit higher, 2.6. Georgia Fund 1, right now, is about 2.3%. But again, you can see total interest for the month on the general fund is about 171 million. So we felt like that's, that's good.
It's good compared to what we've had.
Yeah, exactly. All the rest are normal expenditures, continuing to spend the 2018 bond money. Still spending some of the Sploes 4 money. And then you can see the transfers, that 19 million and the 11 million was for the debt service payments coming out of Sploes 5. So total investments were about 266 million at the end of January. Sploes receipts, always remember December is a big month. January is actually December collections, almost 3.9 million. The number that I always look at is compared to where we're at previous year, so it's about 3.6% increase over last year. We had 3.7 million. So that trend's continuing. So our monthly average is creeping towards 3.3 million. So still very impressive numbers coming in from Sploes. The last slide is our cash receipts and special for our schools. Elementary, almost 4.6 million total. Middle school, 2.1 million. Almost 4 million at the high schools, for a total of 10.6 million, which is normal. Very compared to where we were at last year with our, with our school accounts. I'll be happy to answer any questions I might have.
Anybody have any questions?
What was the year the bond was paid off?
It's an older issue.
Was it 14? Was it like a 10?
I think it was maybe even an 11. There was one that got refinanced, and I can get you that information.
Was it 2004 or 2011?
I think it's either 4 or 11. There were two older issues that were, were still out there. One got refunded at some, or refinanced at some point. But it may have been actually the 2004 issue, I think.
Well, we'd done some in 2017. I remember thinking we were going to pay off in 2019, and it's hard to believe that we're actually in 2019.
Yeah, I know. Maybe I was like, oh, that's the last payment.
It's a good feeling.
That's a good feeling.
It was a really good feeling. All right, so no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, next we have action items. The native little school number 11, with Jennifer Protschler.
Good evening. Last week, I brought before you the online votes that we received, and we had over 20,000 people vote, and which is really what you want whenever you're looking at a general population of 220,000 individuals living in our county. You want about that 10 or 15%. And so overall, the largest percentage of votes was for Don Hendricks, and that received over 15,000 unvotes. So at this time, I would like to ask the superintendent to please recommend naming our next middle school, the Donald F. Hendricks Middle School.
I would recommend approval.
Motion by Tom. Second by Darren. Any discussion?
I would like to say that, you know, it's an honor to have been a part of the seat that Don Hendricks held. I still remember the night. It's very impactful when Ben read the letter of his passing. And so that stuck with me through the whole time I've served on this board. And learning a lot more about his service during that time. We were in different parts of the county as we served and as I came in in 1995. But we were on similar paths to make this a better place. And I think we're here today partially because of that. So it's an honor to do this.
Jennifer, is this the most participation you've had from the community for naming a school?
Yes, sir. My last was four years ago with Denmark.
I think that says a lot from the community. And I think it's really neat as a board that we can approve this naming of a school that was selected by the community. So thank you for your work on this and your leadership on this. And one of the things that Dr. Bearden shared with me a couple of weeks ago that I wanted to share is that he made a comment, and I love his comment. And I've been telling everybody I know about this comment. And he said, yeah, this is good. I say it so much now, my wife is telling people. But he said, Dr. Bearden, you said that the school, our schools are the hub of the community. And that is so huge. And so I want to thank you for your commitment and your leadership and vision to allow the community to pick a name in honor of somebody that's done so much in the community. And I think we're heading in the right direction with that. So thank you for that.
I see lots of his family are here. Congratulations.
Would you all stand up?
And former superintendent Paul Galt.
Why don't we just, let's vote on that? Anybody in favor? And we already did. Just had to vote on it though. Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Any of the family?
Would any of the family like to say anything?
We'd love to have you come say something if you'd like.
They all look at Suzanne.
We're the speaker, we know that.
We know who the speaker is. You don't.
If you don't have your stack.
A spell on me and Carolyn.
You had already asked what they're written up for.
No, she always puts me up to having to say things. So if I would have known, I could have put a little bit of thought into something. But we would just like to thank the Forsyth County community and to you, the Board of Education, for recognizing Dad's service to the community with a special honor. So thank you. I wish I would have prepared something more elegant to say, but we really do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. All right, that's a great, that's an exciting one. That's hard to follow. But we do have up next, Michael Satofield with Bus Air Conditioning Retrofit.
That's pretty exciting.
I'm excited about this. I know there's a lot of students that are, as well as the bus drivers.
I have got to work on my placement on the agenda.
You and Chris. This is good.
As you guys know, this item, this action item's a culmination of some work that we've been doing since the 2018 bond was passed, I guess in May of 2018, a little less than a year ago. We spent our fall, and I want to, I want to start by thanking Brad Richardson and Trey Tryon and the purchasing department. Trey and Brad have been invaluable in, in their ability to research and make sure that the, the project, as it, as it came about, was, was really something that was going to work for Forsyth County, for, for the school system and for the students. I guess we began this process in the fall and through the purchasing department. Back in November, we put an RFP together and, and released it with the intention of securing a contract to retrofit 262 of our school buses with air conditioning. As you guys know, as part of the, as part of the bond project list in May of 2018, Forsyth County Schools Transportation had two projects as part of that, as part of that bond. One was the purchase of new school buses to accommodate growth. And the second was to make sure that we move forward and, and put air conditioning and provided air conditioning on all of the buses in our fleet. As of today, we currently provide air conditioning for our special needs school buses, for transportation for our special needs students. This project is going to give it, provide us with the opportunity to provide air conditioning for all of our students who ride Forsyth County school buses. We put our RFP out in November. We had contacted six different companies that had a footprint, either in the state or the region, who, who we felt might have the capacity to retrofit 262 school buses with air conditioning that would meet both state and national standards for such a project. I guess when we, when we got to the deadline of December 14th, we had one vendor that responded in a way that, that provided us with confidence that they would have the capacity to complete a project of this, of this size. Retrofitting 262 school buses with air conditioning is a big project in the school bus air conditioning world. The only one we found of, of any comparable size was a project that was completed in Fayette County in 2017 of 154 school buses. Our evaluation included reference research, additional negotiation, product inspection, onsite testing, face-to-face presentations that, that involved the vendor that I'd like to recommend. Working with purchasing, I'd like to recommend that we award this, we award this project to Yancey Bus Sales and Service. I'd like to provide a, a few more specifics as to why. As you know, and the information that's been shared, this project of 262 buses is, would incur a cost of a little bit over $2.859 million to complete. The project would be funded through the 2018 bond. And this project is estimated to take 65 weeks to complete when it starts. The reason that the timeframe is important, Yancey Bus Sales and Service has multiple locations throughout the state where they provide bus service. They've got approximately 10 throughout the state. Two of which they would, they would dedicate four bays and four installation bays and four sets of technicians Monday through Friday over the course of 65 weeks to complete this project. When we looked at, when we did our research with other school systems and vendors, what we found and what we learned was that there are a number of vendors out there who would promise a quicker completion on a project of this size. But the reality is, four buses a week, based on the number of locations and technicians that, that the vendor, that Yancey has, has shared with us, is reasonable and is, and would be standard. I guess in terms of, in terms of what the installation included, each bus would need to be outfitted with two units that would allow us to provide 120,000 BTUs of, of air conditioning per bus. That's important because that would allow us to meet state and national specifications. Basically, what those are is that if you have a bus that's sitting, sitting with an outside air temperature of 100 degrees Fahrenheit, you would need to be able to shut the windows, crank the bus, get it, get it running about 1,250 RPMs, and have that bus cooled to 80 degrees inside within 30 minutes.[1690.92] to 80 degrees inside within 30 minutes. That's the, that's the standard that we are trying to hit. We also made sure we were very specific in terms of quality. We wanted to make sure, in my mind, and this is something Brad and Trey and I talked about pretty extensively, the only thing worse than no project would be a, would be a bad project. So we wanted to make sure that we, that we did our due diligence to, to make sure the project was going to be done, done in a timely manner, done in the most cost-effective way we could, we could do it, and ultimately enhance the transportation experience that students would have on our bus. So at this time, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Dr. Bearden to recommend to the board that this, this project be awarded to Yancey Bus Sales and Service.
I would recommend approval, and also wanted to thank Trey, who's here tonight, for all of his work on this as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Wes. Any discussion?
I think it's amazing.
Yeah.
I think between keeping the kids happy, the current bus drivers, and bus driver jobs are hard to fill, and this just put us a little bit edge maybe above around, surrounding counties that don't have it yet, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and as always, I appreciate y'all's support. Thank you so much.
All in favor?
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have HVAC ERU and admin HVAC replacement phase three.
Thank you. I come to replace the admin HVA system and the rooftop ERU units at Johns Creek Elementary. This is part of the 2018 bond project. We received road bids, I believe you have a copy of that tabulation in there, and the low bidder was conditioned air at 965, 834. It is recommended that the board approve conditioned air as a contractor for phase three HVAC replacement at Johns Creek Elementary School.
Recommend approval.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by?
Me.
Second by Wes, second by Tom. All in favor? That is unanimous as well. Silver City driveway modifications.
I'm so excited about this. It's a long time coming, isn't it?
This is Silver City Elementary School driveway modification was designed to provide additional vehicular capacity off of Highway 9 of carpool access and staff and visitor parking spaces at Silver City Elementary School. Four bids were received on February the 12th, 2019, with Jim Dittman Grady being the lowest cost responsible and responsive bidder, meeting FCS's terms and conditions. These exterior site improvements will commence soon after award and finish before the end of the school year, finish before school year 1920 begins. This is also part of the 2018 bond package. Five bids were received, and I believe you do have your bid tabulations attached. It is recommended that the school board award Silver City Elementary School driveway modification to Jim Dittman Grady for 397, 793.
Recommend approval.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Darla. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Mr. McKnight, how about modifications at the Hill Center?
The GNETs modifications at Hill Center include new ADA accessible battery toilets, new flooring and cabinetry replacement in the classrooms. Bids were received on February the 12th, 2019, with HCR Construction Inc. being the lowest cost of 272, 232. They were also the most responsive and responsible bidder, and they were meeting FCS terms and conditions. The improvements at the Hill Center will commence on May the 28th and be substantially complete by July 5th, 2019. This is also part of the 2018 bond package. Seven bids were received, and a tabulation is attached. It is recommended that the board award GNETs modification at Hill Center to HCR Construction Inc.
Recommend approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nancy, second by?
Second.
By Tom, all in favor?
Yeah, I was, I had a question. You had said 272 is 232? In the bid package, it shows 232, 272. But I don't think it's documented that way. Does she, just listen to what he?
232, I'm sorry.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I do that sometimes.
Okay.
All right. Shall we just call that again, is it, let's just call?
No, it's not documented, it was just, his presentation had the phone number, just want a clarification.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
Forsyth Central High School Stadium additions and modifications.
We're going to approve it though, or a vote.
That's, that's what I was saying, because we kind of were in the middle of doing the vote, as I said, should we call it, because we kind of were all doing it as you spoke, so I would like to revote on that.
Yeah.
Okay, let's call it again. Unanimous. All right, now Forsyth Central High School Stadium additions and modifications.
The Forsyth Central High School Stadium additions and modifications to include a new fieldhouse, grandstand bleacher, concessions area, and restroom, and expansion of the stadium fieldhouse for boys and girls, annual athletics. Four bids were received on February 15th, with CBI General Contractors being the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, meeting FCS terms and conditions. The improvements will commence soon after the notice to proceed March 1st, 2019, and finish September 14th, 2019. This is also part of the 2018 bond package. Four bids were received, and a tabulation is attached. The bid was, I'll make sure I get it right this time.
Documented right?
It is recommended that the board approve award for Forsyth Central High School Stadium additions and modifications to CBI General Contractors.
Recommend approval. So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Wes. Any questions? All in favor? Unanimous. And last but not least, Mr. McKnight, Sharon Elementary Flooring Repairment.
Bid 19-11 was released for solicitation on January 22nd, 2019, for the purpose, for the purpose of securing a performance contract for a place flooring at Sharon Elementary Schools. Bid invitations were sent to 17 contractors, and the bid was posted on the FCS purchasing webpage and the State Purging Agency. Three bids were opened on February 8th, with DCO flooring being the lowest cost responsible and responsible bidder, meeting FCS terms. This project is also part of the 2018 bond, and the bid tabulation is attached, and the financial cost for DCO was $177,600. It is recommended that the board approve bid B19-11 to DCO Commercial Floors.
Recommend approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Darla. Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Mr. McKnight, you've been busy.
I have.
Thank you.
It's going to get busier.
It's busier than I thought.
Starting at the March work session, Mr. Winning will be attending those meetings with construction updates again, to keep you posted on a monthly basis. It's kind of cool to watch the progress.
It really is.
I don't think we'll realize when the bond is passed last year, that's just the start of all the work, and all the work of, so here we are in January, and look how much is already getting done.
Right.
Awesome. Point of information, Dr. Bearden?
I had nothing to add.
All right. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla, all in favor? That's unanimous.